லுக்கா அழித்த சுவிசேஷம் 2 மதிகாரம் 36, 37, 38
கோஸ்பல் 2, ஸைன் லுக் செப்டர் 2, வர்ஸ் 34, 35, 36
36 to 38
And there was one, Anna, a prophetess, the daughter of Phanuel, of the tribe of Asur. She was of great age and had lived with an husband seven years from her virginity. And she was a widow of about four score and four years, which departed not from the temple but served God with fastings and prayers night and day. And she coming in that instant gave thanks likewise unto the Lord and speak of him to all them that looked for redemption in Jerusalem.
ஆசேருடைய கோத்திரத்தாலும் பானுவேலின் குமாரத்தியமாகிய அன்னாலேனும் ஒரு தீர்க்குதெர்ஸி இருந்தால் அவள் கண்ணிப்ராயத்தில் விபாகமானது முதல் 7 வர்ஷம் புர்சனொடினை வாழ்ந்தவளும் அதிக வயது செஞ்சொலமாயிருந்தால் ஏறகுறிய எண்பத்தினால் அந்த விதவை தேவானைத்து விட்டு நீங்காமல் இரவும் பகலும் உபவாசித்து ஜெபம் பண்ணி ஆராதனை செய்துகொண்டிருந்தால் அவளும் அன்னேரத்திலே வந்து நின்று கத்தரி புகந்து எர்சிலேமே மீட்புண்டாகக் காதிர்ந்த யாவருக்கும் அவரிக் குறித்து பேசலாம்.
கத்தருடைய பரிசுத்த நமதுக்கு மைமுண்டாவுதா?
May the God's holy name be glorified.
இங்கே அன்னால் இருந்த ஒரு சகோதரியைக் குறித்து நாம் படிக்கோம்.
Here we are reading about a sister named Anna.
நமக்கு எல்லாருக்கு அதிகமாக பரிச்சியமான ஆள் வந்து பழையர்ப்பாட்டில் உள்ள அன்னால்.
And we all practice the Anna in the Old Testament.
ஆனா, புதியர்ப்பாட்டில் ஒரு அன்னால் இருக்குறால் என்பதை நாம் புரிந்து கொள்ளவேன்.
We have to understand there is an Anna in New Testament also.
பழையர்ப்பாட்டு அன்னாலுக்கும், புரியர்ப்பாட்ட அன்னாலுக்கும் பெரிய வித்யாசம் இருக்குறது.
And there is a great difference between the Old Testament Hannah and New Testament Anna.
பழையர்ப்பாட்டு அன்னாலைக் குறித்து கொஞ்சம் விரிவாகச் சொல்லப்பட்டாலும் ஆளமாகச் சொல்லப்படவில்லை.
Even when it is not explained in this Old Testament about Hannah, it is not mentioned very deep.
விரிவாகச் சொல்லப்பட்டாலும் ஆளமாகச் சொல்லப்படவில்லை.
Even if it is mentioned in brief, it was not mentioned so deep.
இவள பொற்றி விரிவாகச் சொல்லப்படவில்லை ஆனால் ஆளமாகச் சொல்லப்பட்டுக்கிறார்கள்.
And here she was not mentioned so brief but it was mentioned so deep.
தமிழ்ல சொல்லுவா? அகல உளுவதிலும் ஆள உளுவது நல்லது. அகலமா உளுகுறது விட ஆளமா உளுகுறது நல்லதுன்னு சொல்லு.
It is better to plough more widely than to deep.
இன்னைக்கு நாம் அன்னாலைக் குறித்து படிக்கப்போவோம்.
Today we are going to study about Anna.
லாஸ்ட்வீக் நம்ம சிமியோன குறித்து படித்தோம்.
Last week we meditated about Simeon.
தனிமனித வாள்வை படிக்கும்பொழுது நம்முடிய வாள்வூடு ஒப்பிட்டுப் பார்த்து நம்முடைய நிறைவுகளை சரிபடித்துக்கொளலாம்.
When we study or meditate about the personal person's life and we can make such right our life.
புரியர்ப்பாட்ட அன்னாலைக் குறித்து படிக்கும்பொழுது மூன்றெய் வசனங்கள்.
When we tell about this that the New Testament Anna, there are only three verses.
ஆனா இதில் பெரிய டெப்ட் இருக்குறது.
That there is a great depth in it.
அவளுடைய கோத்திரம் சொல்லப்பட்டுருக்கிறது.
And tribe was mentioned here.
அவள் யாருடைய குமாரத்தியந்து சொல்லப்பட்டுருக்கிறது.
And it mentioned on whose daughter she was.
அவளுடைய ஸ்பிரிசுவல் ஸ்டாண்டர்ட் சொல்லப்பட்டுருக்கிறது.
And her spiritual standard was mentioned.
அதே நிறத்தன் உலக வாள்கீல அவளுக்குள்ள எளப்புகளும் சுட்டி காட்டப்படுறது.
And some of the losses that take place in her worldly life is also mentioned.
நாம் இதைக் குறித்து கொஞ்சம் விரிவாகப் பார்க்குறோம்.
And let us see in brief.
முதலாவது அவள் ஆசேர் கோத்திரதை செய்ந்தார்.
And first she belonged to the tribe of Asur.
ஆசேர் என்று சொன்னால் பைபில்ல அர்த்தம் சொல்லப்பட்டுருக்கிறது. சந்தோஷம் இலவற்றல் பாக்கியவன்.
Asur makes a blessed or he is full of joy.
ஒரு தேவனுடைய பிளிணுடிய வாள்கீல உலக பிரகாரமான சந்தோஷ் இருக்கோ இலியோ ஆவிக்குறிய விதத்திலே அவனு ஒரு சந்தோஷமுள்ளவனாக பாக்கியவனாக இருக்கவேன்.
A child of God, whether he may be in glad or joy in this worldly life, he should have the joy and gladness and blessedness in the spiritual life.
ஆசேர் முர்பிடாக்கில் ஒராள்.
And Asur, he was one of among the fathers.
யாக்கோவினுடைய ஒரு குமார.
And he is the son of Jacob.
அவனுடைய வாள்கை பற்றி பைபில்ல நாம் ரெண்டு அடங்கள்ல பார்க்குறோம்.
And we can see his life in the two places in Bible.
உன்ற ஆதியாகமும் நாபத்தியூன்பதிலே அவனுடைய தகப்பன் அவனைப் பற்றி பேசுகிறார்.
In Genesis chapter forty-nine, his father speaks about him.
ஆது உபாகமும் 33 மதிகாரத்தில் ஊளியக்கார்நாகிய மோசே அவனிக் குறித்து பேசுகிறார்.
And Deuteronomy chapter thirty-three, the servant of God Moses is speaking about him.
செல வேத பகுதிகளை நீங்கள் படிக்கும்பொழுது.
When we read about some of these scriptures.
ஆதியாகமும் நாபத்தியூன்பதிலே பார்க்கும்பொழுது தனுடைய பிள்ளைகளைக் குறித்து ஒவ்வொரு விதங்களிலே யாக்கோவுச் சொன்னதை நீங்கள் பார்க்கலாம்.
In Genesis chapter forty-nine and he is giving a certificate about every son in the Genesis chapter forty-nine.
அப்படி தகப்பனாலே குற்றஞ்சாட்டப்பட்ட செல பிள்ளைகள் உபாகமும் 33ல பார்க்கும்பொழுது ஊளியாலே பறாட்டப்பட்டுருக்கறார்கள்.
And Rue was accused by his father in Genesis forty-nine and was accepted and certified by Moses in Deuteronomy chapter thirty-three.
ரூபனைக் குறித்து உபாகமத்திலே நாம் ஆதியாகமத்தில பார்க்கும்பொழுது அவனைத் தாருமாராக சபிக்கறார்.
And when we look into Rueben in chapter forty-nine of Genesis and he was purposely cursing him.
ஆனா மோசே அவனைக் குறித்து பேசும்பொழுது ரூபன் பிடைப்பானாக அவினுன்னு சொல்லு.
But when Moses speak about him, he said so and Rueben pressed the.
ஆனால் நாம் இந்த நாட்களிலே பாக்கியவன்களாய் மாறும்.
So we should become a blessed one in these days.
கிருஷ்டவ வாள்கீல நம் நிர்ப்பாக்கியமுள்ளவர்களாய் மாறக்கூடாது.
In Christian life, we should not become a rich state.
ஒரு தேவனுடைய பிள்ளை எப்பொழுதும் பாக்கியவனாக இருக்கும்.
A child of God always must be a blessed one.
இப்ப நான் பாக்கியவன் என்ற சப்ஜெட்ல போனான்னா மூனு மாசம் பேசலாம்.
If I want to speak about this topic of blessedness, I can speak for three months.
என்ன பழையர்ப்பாட்டில் எவ்வளோு பாக்கியவன்கள் இருக்கறார்கள். பிக்கு. புரியர்ப்பாட்டில் ஏசுவே ஒரு கூட்டம் பாக்கியவன்களை அறிமோபபடுத்துகிறார்.
In Old Testament, there are many blessed people. We can find that in New Testament, Jesus was introducing many blessed people.
மலைப்ரசங்கத்தில் ஏசு என்ன சொல்கிறார்? இருதேதில் சுத்தமுள்ளவர்கள் பாக்கியவன்.
About preaching in a sermon what Jesus said and whose pure in heart are blessed.
128 ம் சங்கீதம் ஒன்று என்ன சொல்லுகிறது? கத்தருக்கு பயந்து நடக்கிற மன்னிஷை. ஹ? ஆ, அப்ப இதிலும் என்ன விளங்கிக்கொள்ளறா?
And what we understand from this.
நாம் இந்த நாட்களில் பாக்கியவன்களாய் மாறும்.
And we should become a blessed in these days.
ஆவிக்குறிய வாள்கீல வந்துட்டு பிறகு.
After coming to the spiritual life.
நாம் நிர்ப்பாக்கியமுள்ளவர்களாக மாறக்கூடாது.
And we should not become a rich man.
நீங்கள் சபையைக் குறித்து சபைகளைக் குறித்து ஏழு சபைகளைக் குறித்து வெளிப்பட்டதிலே படிக்கலாம்.
We can read about the seven churches in Book of Revelation.
அதில் ஒரு சபையைப் பற்றி நீங்கள் பார்த்தீங்கன்னா.
When we meditate about one of the church.
அது பரிதுப்பிக்கப்படத்தக்க ஒரு நிர்ப்பாக்கியமுள்ளது.
And.
மூன்று வெளிப்படத்தல் மூன்று பதினேழு.
And three seventeen of Revelation.
நீ நிர்ப்பாக்கியமுள்ளவனா?
நிர்ப்பாக்கியமுள்ளவன்.
And you are rich.
ஒரு ஆவிக்குறிய சபைனுடைய நெலவரம் எவ்வளோு மோசமாக இருக்குறது நீங்கள் பார்த்து.
You can see how bad and worse the state of this spiritual church.
நாம் நிர்ப்பாக்கியமுள்ளவர்கள் அல்ல.
And we are not a rich one.
நாம் பாக்கியவன்களாய் மாறும்.
And we must become a blessed one.
நான் தான் சொன்ன பாக்கியவன் கொந்து ஒரு பெரிய சப்ஜெட்.
And that's why I said and blessedness is a great subject.
ஆனா, நீ பாக்கியவனா இல்லென்னா நீ முதலாம் உயிர்த்திலில் பங்குள்ளவனாய் மாறமாட்டாய்.
If you are not blessed and you cannot take part in the first resurrection.
முதலாம் உயிர்த்திலிலுக்குப் பங்குள்ளவன் பாக்கியவனும் பரிசுதவனுமாயிருக்கிறான்.
And he who is a part of the first resurrection is a holy and blessed.
அப்ப இதிலும் என்ன விளங்கிக்கொள்ளுறா?
What do we understand from this?
ஒரு தேவனுடைய பிள்ளை பாக்கியவனா இருந்தாதா முதலாம் உயிர்த்திலிலுக்கு வாருவான்.
A child of God who is taking part in this first resurrection and who is blessed and holy.
முதலாம் உயிர்த்தில் பங்குடையாவிட்டால் நம்முடிய வாள்கீல மேன்மேனா வடையமுடியாது.
If you are not taking part in the first resurrection and you cannot attain the greatness in your life.
வாசிங்கள்.
வெளிப்பட்டதில் 24 மதிகார ஆராவசனம். முதலாம் உயிர்த்திலிலுக்குப் பங்குள்ளவன் பாக்கியவனும் பரிசுதவனுமாயிருக்கிறான்.
அவ பெஸ்ட் யாரா மாறுறா? யாரா மாறுறா? பாக்கியவன். ரெண்டாவது யாரா மாறுறா? அவன் பரிசுதவனாய் மாறுது.
And first he became a blessed and secondly he became the holy one.
அப்ப கிருஷ்டவ வாள்கீலும் முதலாவது நாம் பாக்கியவன்களாய் மாறும்.
We in the Christian life and we must become a blessed one.
ஆவிக்குறிய வாள்கீல வந்துட்டு பிறகு நீங்க பாக்கியவன்களாய் மாறுவேன் இது அவசியம்.
After coming to the spiritual life, it is very needed for you should become a holy and blessed.
நமக்கு ரச்சிப்பு கொடுத்தது ஒரு பாக்கியவன்.
And salvation is given to us and that it is a blessedness.
முழு உலகத்துக்காக ஏசு ரத்தம் சிந்திநாலும்.
Even the Lord should wait for the whole world.
நம்மள தேடிப்பிட்ச் சிறிரச்சித்தாரே எவ்வளவரும் நான் ரசிகப்படலே.
He sought after us and saved us and many have not saved it.
அப்ப நாம் ரசிகப்பட்டமை அது ஒரு பெரிய பாக்கிய.
And we got saved and that is a great blessedness.
ரசிகப்பட்ட சந்தங்கள் கோடிக்கனக்கான வேறு இருக்கும்பொழுது நம்மள அபிஷேகம் மண்ணாரே நம்ம இன்னும் பாக்கியவன்கள்.
When crowds and crowds of people were saved and but still the Lord appointed us and yet more we are blessed.
அபிஷேகம்பெற்ற கிருஷ்டவர்கள் கூட்டம் ஆயிரக்கணக்கள் லெச்சக்கணக்கள் இருக்கும்பொழுது நம்ம பரிசுதவாங்கள் ஓளிலுள்ள பரிசுதவாங்கள் சொத்தந்தர்த்தில் கொண்டுவந்தாரே அப்ப நாம் இன்னும் அதேவிட பாக்கியவன்.
And the manner of many unknown people and thousands and lakhs of people are formed in this world at the Lord's door and through the light of the saints of God and that it is more blessedness.
இந்த சபைக்குள்ள வந்துருக்குறோம் பாருங்க. இப்ப வருகில் காய்த்தபடுறோமே ஆனா அதேவிட பாக்கியவன்.
And we came to this church and we are getting ready for the rapture and yet we are more blessed.
உண்மையாகவே வருகில் என்னைக்கு நம்ம போரமா அன்னைக்குதான் நம்ம பாக்கியவன்கள் என்பது நிருவிக்கப்படும்.
Really, when we are taken up in the rapture on those days, it was we proud that we are blessed.
முதலாவது நாம் பாக்கியவன்கள் என்பதை நாம் விசுவாசிக்கவேன்.
First we have to believe that we are blessed people.
நாங்குடைய யோசிப்பாப்பை செல்ல நாத்திலோகாந் யோசிப்பாப்பை என்ன சம்பந்தமிலாமா நம்ம இதுக்குள்ள ஒதுமாடிட்டுமென்று.
And sometimes I used to come for anything so and without anything, any relationship we have come and caught here.
நமக்கு சிபியமுக்குப் பெண்டிகாஸ்டுக்கு ஏசு இதுல்லான் சம்பதமிலாத ட்ராக்ல போன ஒரு ஆள் கொண்டுவிடுது தேடி புடிச்சி கொண்டு எங்கோ காரோச்சாரே சார்லோக்காரரான் சொன்னவை.
And we are not related to this track in Pentecostal church that the Lord sought after us and made us to sit here.
அந்தோடு நோக்கத்தில் எப்படி வச்சிருக்கார் பாருங்க.
And see how the Lord kept us in his purpose.
பாச்சர் பிரபாகர் அடிகிடி சொல்லுவாரு.
Pastor Prabha used to tell often.
நாம்மட்டு ஏசு புடிச்சிருந்தன்னா எப்பொமோ ஓடிப்பிருப்பேன். அவரு புடிச்சுகிட்டார் அதை இதோரிக்கு நான் ஓடாமருக்கேம்ம.
If I hold Jesus and I would have not left somewhere but Jesus had held me, I never staying in him.
என்ன எனக்கு வந்து ஊலியில் இருந்த பிரச்சனைகளுல்லை நான் அவர் கையைப் புடிச்சிருந்தன்னா எப்பொமோ நின்னிருப்பேன். ஐயா வேண்டவே வேண்டா விட்டுருன் நான் போய்ட்டுருப்பேன். ஆனா புடிச்சது யாரே? அவரு புடிச்சதாரே. அவரு விடவே மடக்கறாரும்போது.
The problems which I was facing in the ministry were so many and if I had held his hands, I would have left him but he held my hands so I was still at saving.
அதை நாலாதான் பைபில்ல சொல்லி இருக்கு. உனக்கு கொடுத்த நல்ல தேசத்துக்காக நீ என்ன செய்நோ? தேவனை ஸ்தோத்திரிக்கக்கடவாய்.
So in the Bible say for the good land the Lord has given, you must praise him.
நீ புசித்து கூடித்து மகிழ்ச்சியா இருக்கும்பொழுது நல்ல தேசத்துக்காக நீ என்ன செய்நோ? நன்றி செல்லத்தோ. ஆண்டவரே இந்த பாக்கியம் கொடுத்தீங்களே அதுக்காக ஸ்தோத்து.
When you eat drink and rejoice in this good land and you must offer praises and think giving thanks to the Lord for giving you good land.
கத்தரை தேவமாகின்றுருக்கிற ஜனம் பாக்கியமுள்ள.
And blessed is the people that made Lord as his womb.
அப்ப நாம்தான் பாக்கியவன்.
And we are the blessed people.
எந்த சூழலிலும் நம் நிர்ப்பாக்கியமுள்ளவர்களாக இன்னும் செய்குடாது. பொய்றவே கூடாது.
At any kind of situation and we should not go to the rich state.
ஒருவெளியின் உலகத்தில் நம்மக்கு ஒன்னுமே எட்டிருக்காது.
And sometimes we do not have anything in this world.
உலகத்தில் எவ்வளோு எளக்கரமோ பரலவுத்தில் எவ்வளோு வெனுசியுது. இங்க மைனஸ் ஆகுதுன்னா அங்க கூடுது. இங்க பிளஸ் ஆகுதுன்னா அங்க மைனஸ் ஆகுது.
Whatever we lose in this world and we become plus in this heaven and whatever it is going to pass in this heaven, it becomes a loss in this earth.
நம்ம ஆளங்கள் ரெண்டு சைட்லேமே பிளஸ் ஆகுந்து பார்க்கறாங்க. அதை எப்படி முடியும்?
And other people want to become and I had in both places.
அந்த ஐசுரியவன் அந்த தரத்தரன் விஷயத்திலே ஆப்ரகம் ஒரு வார்த்தை சொல்லுறாரு. நீ பூமியிலே எல்லாவற்றையும் அனுபவித்தாய். இப்ப நீ கஷ்டப்படுறாய். அவர் எல்லாவற்றையும் தீமையா அனுபவித்தான். அவர் என்ன செய்றா? இன்னைக்கு நன்மை அனுபவிக்கறா. நீ நன்மை அனுபவிச்சே. இப்ப தீமை அனுபவிக்கறா.
A rich man and a poor in state, Abraham has given confession that and you have done good things in your life, now you are thinking and you are experiencing evil and those days he was experiencing evil, now he experience good.
அது நல்ல சாப்பிடறவங்க, நல்ல ட்ரஸ் போட்டுருக்கவங்க, நல்ல கார்ல போறவங்க, பிளைட்ல போறவங்க நல்ல விசுவாசிகள் பரகாரங்கள் இருக்குறவங்களைப் பாத்துக்கிட்டு நீங்கலா இன்னும் செய்றீங்க. ஆயோ போச்சே நமக்கு எல்லாம் பிடிக்கடிக்கிலே பரந்தா இப்படிலா பரந்துருக்கணோ. அப்படிலா நீங்க யோசிக்கவேண்டா. இப்படி பரந்தது நல்லது நான் எங்க போயிருவேன்? எனக்கு என்ன இருக்கு? பரலவுத்தில் ஒரு இடா இருக்குங்கறவு நிச்சயத்தை நீங்கள் பெற்றுக்கொள்ளவேண்டும்.
And looking into the rich people though, so go by car and flight and you should not have a desire about thing and you must have a hope and realization and believe that I will be caught up in the rapture.
நீ பாக்கியவன்.
You are blessed.
எப்படி அவன் பாக்கியவனா மாறுறா?
How he became blessed?
ஆதியாகமும் நாபத்தியூன்பது இருவதை பார்க்கும்பொழுது.
When we look at the book of Genesis, chapter forty-nine, verse twenty.
ஆசேருடைய ஆகாரம் கொளுமியாயிருக்கும். ராஜாக்களுக்கு வேண்டிய ருசி வர்கங்களை அவன் தருவான்.
ஆசேருடைய ஆகாரம் கொளுமியாயிருக்கும்.
Out of Asur, his bread shall be fat.
கொளுமியாயிருக்குன்னா டைலி பிரியானி சாப்பிட்டதுலே நம்முடிய ஜீவியத்திலே கொளுமியான ஆகாரங்களது உபதேசதைக்காண்பிக்குற.
And the royal deities in our doctorate shows that we are having a flourish or prosperous doctrines.
அவன் தே ஆகாரம் எப்படி இருக்கோ? அவன் தே ஆகாரம் எப்படி இருக்கோ? கொளுமியாயிருக்கும்.
And how was bread, it shall be made fat.
எப்படி எப்படியெல்லாம் வாசிக்கும்பொழுது பாலை உண்ணத்தக்க ஒரு கூட்டம் இருக்கிறது. பலமான ஆகாரத்தைப் புசிக்கப்புடியும் ஒரு கூட்டம் இருக்கிறது.
And when we look at the book of Hebrews and there are the group of people and those who take milk and those who take another sound food.
வாசிங்க.
இரைந்த மழியா பாரிமூன்றாவசனம். பாலொங்கிரவன் குழந்தையாயிருக்கிறபடினாலே மீதின் வசனத்தில் பழக்கமில்லாதவனாயிருக்கிறான். பலமான ஆகாரமானது நன்மை தீமை இன்னுதென்று பைச்சினால் பகுத்தரியத்தக்கதாக முயற்சி செய்யும் யானைங்கிருங்களை உடையவன்களாகிய பொருண வயதுல்லக்கே தகும்.
பலமான ஆகார.
A strong bit.
நீ பாருங்க. உலகத்தில் எல்லாரும் நல்ல அளக சாப்பிட்டு சந்தோஷமா இருக்கும்பொழுது யோவன் சானக்கு என்ன சாப்பிட்டா? ஹ? பெட்டிகள் என்ன இந்த விட்டியில் பரந்துட்டுக்கிறீர்கள்? இதை புடிச்சு புடிச்சு சாப்பிட்டுதுன்னா? எவ்விட? இப்ப இப்பது ஓன்ன அந்த செடிகளை நீங்க தவிகிட்டுக்கிறீர்கள். அதை வெட்டிகிட்டு இருந்தா? அது சாப்பிட்டுதுன்னா? இல்ல. அது ஒரு கெலங்கு.
And locust is like an N.
அந்த கெலங்கு புசித்தா. அது அவனுடைய ஆகார.
And he was consuming the tea and that was his food.
அடுத்த என்ன சாப்பிட்டா?
And then what he did eat?
ஹ? காட்டுதேன். அதை என்ன காண்பிக்கிறது? தேனிலும், செளி தேனிலும் மதுரம் வசனம்.
And that is wild honey which is tasted more than honey but is a word of God.
ஏசு சின்னபிள்ளை இருக்கும்பொழுது என்ன சாப்பிட்டாரு?
And when Jesus was young, what did he eat?
மத்தையும் மூனுலே நீங்க பார்க்கறீங்க. யோவன் சானக்கு என்ன சாப்பிட்டாரு? வாசிங்க. மூனு, மூனா. அவன் வெட்டிக்கிளியும் காட்டுதேனு?
நாங்காவசனம். மத்தையும் மூன்றாவது மதிகார நாங்காவசனம். இந்த யோவன் ஒட்டதமையினுடைய தரித்து தன்னாறையில் வார்க்கச்சி கட்டிக்கொண்டுதுன்னா வெட்டுக்கிளியும் காட்டுதேனும் அவனுக்கா ஆகாரமாயிருந்தது.
இங்கில்ஸ் எப்படி இருக்கு? கொஞ்சம் பாருங்க. இங்கில்ஸ்.
And his meat was locust and wild honey.
அப்படின்னா என்னது? அது ஒரு கெலங்கு.
And it is a kind of N or potato.
சரி. ஏசு சின்னபிள்ளை என்ன சாப்பிட்டாரு? சொல்லு.
What Jesus ate in his young age?
என்ன? ஹ? என்னது? வெண்ணையும் தேனையும் சாப்பிட்டாரா? அவர் பாத்துத்தென்று காண்டா. பைபில்ல வசனத்துல சொல்லி இருக்காங்க. ஏசாயத்திற்கு திருச்சன புஸ்தகோ ஒன்பதாம் மதிகாரம். வாசிங்க.
ஏணா மதிகார பதினைந்து.
சரி. தப்பு. ஏழு?
பதினைந்து.
பதினைந்து. ஆ.
தீமையே வெறுத்து நன்மை தெரிந்துகொள்ள அறியும் வயது மட்டும் அவர் வெண்ணையையும் தேனையையும் சாப்பிடுவார்.
என்ன சாப்பிடுவாரு? நன்மை, தீமை, தெளிவான அறியுவாரு அவரு என்ன சாப்பிடுவாரு? வெண்ணையையும் தேனையையும் சாப்பிடுவார்.
Until he get good knowledge of the evil and good and he consume butter and honey.
அது என்ன வெண்ணை?
And what is that butter?
பால் அல்ல. பால் வந்து வசனோ. இது அடுத்த ஸ்டெப்புக்கு போயியு, அடுத்த ஸ்டெப்புக்கு வந்துருக்கு. என்னது? உபதேசம்.
And milk is a word of God. It is not, we came to the next step and it is a doctrine.
குழந்தைகளுக்கு எத கொடுப்பாங்க? பால் கொடுப்பாங்க.
And for the child they give milk.
வளந்த பிள்ளைகளுக்கு பலமான ஆகாரம் கொடுப்பாங்க.
For the grown-up child and they give the strong meats.
ஏசுக்கு பால் கொடுத்தாங்க ஒரு டைம். அது அறிக்கடுத்த ஸ்டெப்புக்கு எங்க வந்தாரு? வெண்ணைக்கு வந்துட்டாரு.
And Jesus was given milk at one stage and next stage he came to eat this butter.
பால் வர்வொச்சி தைராக்கி தரையே தைர கடஞ்சி எது வரும்? வெண்ணை வரும்.
And with milk, milk becomes curd and when it is curd, it becomes butter.
வேத வாக்கியங்களைச் சும்மா படிச்சால் அது ஆறாயின்து பார்க்கணும். அப்ப வெண்ணை நித்தி ஜீவன் கிடைக்கும்.
Just not only reading the scripture, we have to meditate and we have to examine and then it becomes eternal life.
ஆசேருடைய ஆகாரம் எப்படி இருக்கோ? கொளுமியானது.
The bread of Asher would be flat.
நம்ம வந்து சும்மா சுவிசேஷம் காட்டிக்கிட்டுருக்க கூடாது.
It is not only just we are hearing the doctrine of gospel.
சுவிசேஷம் வந்து ஸ்டார்டிங் ஸ்டேஜ்.
And gospel is the initial state.
பொருணம் வந்தது உபதேச.
And perfection is a doctrine.
தேவ பக்திக்கேற்ற உபதேச.
And it is a doctrine concerned to the God of God.
கிருஷ்டுவின் உபதேச.
And it is the doctrine of Christ.
கிருஷ்டுவின் உபதேசத்தை உடையவன் இல்ல, கிருஷ்டுவின் உபதேசம் இல்லாதவன், கிருஷ்டுவனுடையவன் அல்ல.
And he do not have the doctrine of Christ, belong not to Christ.
என்ன பெண்டிகாஸ்ட் காரங்க மத்தங்களோடு மிங்கிலாகுமாடக்கறாங்கன்னு ஒரு கூஸ்டி.
And there was a question, why the people of Pentecost are not mingling with others?
ஆரம்பகாலங்கள் மிங்கிலாய்ட்டுனோ.
In the initial state and we were mingling with them.
அப்ப அப்ப செமினர் வைப்பாங்க.
And we used to conduct seminars.
எல்லா பாஸ்டர்ஸ் அடென்மன்வாங்க.
All the pastors will attend the seminar.
இப்ப இந்திப்பண்ட பாஸ்டர்ஸ் எல்லாம் செய்ற மாறி நம்ம ஆளங்களும் பொய்யல அடென்மன்வாங்க.
And independent pastors are gathering and we people also will gather there.
ஒரு காலத்தில் மதிரையில் மீட்டிங் வைக்கும்பொழுது ஆஸ்பான் மீட்டிங்கள், நம்ம மீட்டிங்கள் தான் ஆஸ்பான் பேசுறார்.
And Asman went back at Matri meeting and he was speaking in that meeting.
ஆஸ்பான்னா ஒரு பொரின் பிரேச்சர் நீங்கலா கெல்விப்பட்டுருப்பீங்க. நம்ம மீட்டிங்கள் அவரு பேசுறார். நம்ம பாஸ்டர்ஸ் எல்லாம் ஒக்காந்துருக்காங்க. அவரும் பேசுறாரு. நம்ம ஆளங்களும் ஹீலிங் பண்றாங்க. அவரும் ஹீலிங் பண்றாங்க. அது ஒரு கால.
You could have heard about Pastor Asman and he was a famous preacher in the Independent Church and he was preaching in our church and the people also preaching.
இப்ப அடிகிடி செமினர் வச்சி வசனங்கள பேசுவாங்க.
Often they used to conduct seminars and speak the word of God.
அர்த்தர் பாக்கியராஜினு ஒர்த்தர் இருந்தார்.
And there was a brother called Bakiraj.
அவரு கொஞ்சம் பைபில்ல ஸ்காலர். நம்ம இதில.
And he was a scholar in Bible in our congregation.
இவங்க பதினெட்டா வசன பேசுனா இவருக்கு சான்ஸ் கொடுத்தவனே பத்தம்போலா வசன புரிப்பாரு.
And when he was speaking about eighteenth verse and he will take a hold of nineteenth verse.
உபதேசத்தில் அவங்களை ஒன்னுமிலாமாக்குடுவாரு.
And through the doctrine and he will make them known.
ஒரு நாலு மீட்டிங் அடென்மன்வானே அவங்க பாத்தாங்க. இனிமை சிபியும் கரையின்செய்ய கூடாது. எப்போ வந்தாலும் எடக்கமடக்கான வசனத்தைச் சொல்லி நம்மள வந்து நிச்சயிராங்க. டம்மி பண்றான் சொல்லி. இனிமை வாண்டானாங்க. அதோடு இவங்க ஓரிங்கிட்டார். அன்னைல இருந்து நம் வேறு வாட்டிங் சீவிதுக்கு வந்துவிட்டோம்.
Then they have given a strong meat and they departed him because and they were making confusion and trouble and they thought it out of us and we have gotten through the doctrine of life of separation.
நீ புசித்து கூடித்து உபதேசத்திலே கொளுமியானவனாய் மாறு.
You must become eat and drink and become so flourish in the doctrine.
நீங்க புசித்து கூடித்து இல்லாதவர்க்கது என்ன செய்ங்க? என்ன செய்ங்க? வாசிங்கள். நீங்க புசிச்சி கூடிச்சித்து விட்டுறக்கூடாது. அந்த உபதேசத்தை மத்தங்களுக்கு என்ன செய்ங்க? அனுப்புங்க.
Eat and drink and send the doctrine to others and give to them.
நிகேமிய எட்டாமதிகார பத்தாவசனம். பின்னும் அவன் அவர்களை நோக்கி நீங்கள் போய் கொளுமியானதைப் புசித்து மதுரமானதைக் கூடித்து ஒன்சு இல்லாதவர்களுக்குப் பங்குகளை அனுப்புங்க.
கொளுமியானதைப் புசித்து மதுரமானதைக் கூடித்து அதை நான் கொளுமியானதைப் புசித்து உபதேசத்தைப் புசித்து மதுரமான வசனத்தை நீ கூடித்து நீ என்ன செய்ய? மற்றவனுக்கு இல்லாதவனுக்குக் கூடு உபதேசத்தைச் சொல்ல.
Eat and fat and drink the sweet, this means that you have to take the word of God and doctrine and give it to others that you don't have.
அதை நாம் மத்தங்களோக்கு பாத்தவனே நம்மள பாத்தவனே அவங்க வெடியிட்டு போறாங்க. நம்ம இல்லத்துக்குதே போறாங்க.
So those who come and we are not calling them and they go behind.
பரலவுத்தில் போய் என்ன ஆக போதுன் தெரிலை. எல்லா தனித்தனி வீடி வச்சிருவாங்களான்னு தெரிலை.
I do know what is going to happen in the heaven, we are going to have is different streets.
ஒன்னு யோவன்ல பார்க்கும்பொழுது, ரெண்டு யோவன்ல பார்க்கும்பொழுது.
When we look onto second John.
இந்த உபதேசத்தை ஒர்த்த ஏற்றுக்கிடாட்டா அவனுக்கு விஷ் கூடப்பண்ணாதா அவினுன்னு பைபில் சொல்ல.
And the Bible say when one is not accepting his doctrine and you should not even accept them.
யோ, ரெண்டு யோவன், ஒன்பது, பத்து, பதினொன்னு.
கிருஷ்டுவின் உபதேசத்திலே நிலைத்திராமல் மீரி நடக்கிற எவனும் தேவனை உடையவனல்ல. கிருஷ்டுவின் உபதேசத்தில் நிலைத்திருக்கிறவனோ பிதாவையும் குமார்நேயும் உடையவன். ஒருவன் உங்களுடைத்தில் வந்து இந்த உபதேசத்தைக் கொண்டுவராமலிருந்தா அவனை உங்கள் வீட்டிலே ஏற்றுக்கொள்ளாமலும், அவனுக்கு வாழ்த்தத் தெல்லாமலுமிருங்கள். அவனுக்கு வாழ்த்தத் தெல்லுகிறவன், அவனுடைய துத்கிரிகளுக்கும் பங்குள்ளவனாயிருக்கிறான்.
இதிலாக்கு நம் ஓரிங்கி கொஞ்சம் அமைதியா போகிட்டு இருக்கோ.
So we are laying aside and we are keeping silent.
கிருஷ்டுவின் உபதேச.
And the doctrine of Christ.
கிருஷ்டுவின் உபதேச இல்லைனாங்க, அவ, பிதாவையும் குமார்நேயும் இல்லாதவன்.
If there is no doctrine of Christ and he who will know father and son.
உபாகமும் 33, 24ல பார்க்கும்பொழுது.
When we look into Deuteronomy chapter thirty-three, verse twenty-four.
அந்த ஆசேர் பாக்கியவன் என்று சொல்லப்பட்டுருக்கிறது.
It is mentioned Asur is a blessed.
ஆசேரிக் குறித்து ஆசேர் புத்திர பாக்கியமுடையவனா தன் சகோதரருக்குப் பிரியமாயிருந்து தன் காலை எண்ணையிலே தோய்ப்பான்.
இங்கே ஆசேரிக் புரிச்சு இருக்குற புத்திர பாக்கியமுடையவனாயிருப்பான்.
Asur be the exception of his children.
தன் சகோதரருக்குப் பிரியமாயிருப்பான்.
He is acceptable to his brethren.
தன் காலை எண்ணையிலே தோய்ப்பான்.
And he will dip his foot in oil.
அது அதே காண்பிக்கிறது.
What does it show?
ஆவிக்குறிய வாள்கீல வந்துட்டு பிறகு சகோதரச் நேகம் முக்கியமானு.
After coming to the fellowship of the spiritual life and we must have the brotherlihood.
கண்ட சகோதரனத்தில் அந்புகுறாதவன், காணாத தேவனுடைத்தில் எப்படி அந்புகுறுவா?
And he would not see having love with his brother who see and how he have the love of his brother who do not see.
தன் சகோதரனைப் பகைக்கிற எவனும் மன்னிஷை கொலைபாதக.
And he who hated his brother is a murderer.
அவர் பாக்கியவன் சொன்னா சகோதரரோடு ஐக்கியமகருந்தா.
When we say he is blessed and he should have the fellowship of unity with his brother.
தன் காலை எண்ணையிலே தோய்ப்பான்.
He dipped his the foot on oil.
இது அவனுடைய ஆசிர்வாதமான ஒரு ஆவிக்குறிய வாள்கீலைக்காண்பிக்குற.
And this shows his blessed spiritual life.
யோபுக்கு அப்படி ஒரு வாள்கீல் இருந்தது.
And Job had such a life.
யோபு ஒரு காலத்தில் வசதியா இருக்கும்பொழுது தன் காலை எத, காலை எவிலில் கலுவுனா? செலுங்க. யோபு வசதியா இருக்கும்பொழுது தன் கால்களை எதில் கலுவினா? நெயிலில் கலுவுனானா? ஜோபு. எப்படிலா இருந்துருக்காங்கப்பாரு.
And see how Job was led when he was so rich and he was dipping his foot with the ghee.
யோபு 29 ஆர்.
இன் பாதங்களே நான் நெய்யினால் கலுவினேன்.
என் பாதங்களை எதில் கலுவுனா? நெயிலில் கலுவுனாகற.
I washed my steps with butter.
அப்படின்னா என்ன அர்த்தம்?
What does it mean?
உபதேசத்திலே அவன் கால்கள் கலுவப்படகு.
And your foot must be washed by the doctrine.
அவன் கால்கள் உபதேச, அதது வெண்ணையில இருந்து அடுத்த ஸ்டெப்புதா இது. செலுங்க. வெண்ணையில இருந்து அடுத்த ஸ்டெப்புதா நெய்.
And the next step was butter is ghee.
அப்ப நீ இன்னும் உபதேசத்திலே இன்னும் நீ டெப்டுக்குள்ள போணு.
And still you have to go deep in the doctrine.
Kristaveen obadesa onne kristuvay pola maathano.
The doctrine of Christ was changing like Christ.
Gobi Jati Palayathila oru prasangam.
At Gobi Jati Palayam, there was a preaching.
Ah, na oru subject pesarinthe kurthitthi.
And I have given a topic to speak about a subject.
Goburangal.
It was towers.
RSS avla oru enmita.
All the RSS people rose up.
Engalikka goburangalirukku.
And we have towers.
Enga goburangala taaki pasatha, enga varran cholthu.
And he who come here to attack and speak about our towers.
Naamboi faytamangirukunthi, na brother poli stationla ukandhirkari.
And when he was sitting after this fake home and brother was sitting in a police station.
Eba engala faytum keta, na stationla ukandhirinna.
I asked where is fake home and he said, so I was standing in station where you come.
Ennan keta, goburangal, abdingaradhu, indu varthai.
I asked reason, the meaning for the term, for the towers as a meaning of the skin to wear.
Photograp flaxalallaa goburangaladha alikey sol.
In all the flexible, I asked you to erase the term as goburangal.
Aneki newspaperla fulla potta.
On the day newspaper, it was published.
Epriyana maga publicity thayikite varadhu.
And now it become publicity to us.
Onne, enna goburangala pathi pesaparara.
I asked whatever he is going to speak.
Adha vandhu eluthu puruma kodukum.
In little term they have to give us.
Thiripu oru Bible gum koduthu, naam pesara bannandu goburangaliyin jjo. Note pani koduthu, avu Bibleyin goburavaka, chari intthu vittaa.
I gave the Bible and all the twelve points of towers I am going to speak and they said so, there are towers even in the Bible and the chapters.
Madamattadha pathi pesa kodadhu.
And you should not speak about the conversion of this religion.
Ah, bangaramana meetingadhu, pastantu bakav.
And it was a great meeting near pastor.
Pesara thedal vandhu, periyar thedal.
And the meeting hall is near the periyar meeting hall.
Na stagela nikram, periyaridhal nikiradhu.
I was standing in the stage and periyar was standing near me.
Periyar chellanga nikidhu.
And the statue of periyar is standing.
Ah, gatela polis nikidhu, RSS fulla nikram, enna pesaparav.
Near the gate and police people and all the RSS people are standing.
Allam peesimudichu varumbodhu.
When all was spoken, I came.
First day mudiyabodhu.
And the end of the first day meeting.
Na chonnay, sindikkam marupavam indhu solugirar periyar, sindikkam marupavam muttal, abinna periyar solradhu.
And those who did fail to thought and he is a fool said by periyar.
Na chonnay, kadavul illa indhu sindikkam marupavam muttal.
I said, so those who are not thinking about God and he is a fool.
Periyar team amayidhiyata, onudurin, pesavaila.
And the periyar team, they kept silent, they could not speak.
Adaisilachonnay, madamattam mukhyam alla, oruvarun kristuvanai marave vandam.
And at last.
Kristuvay pola mari nalpoodumnu peesne.
At last I said, so there is no need of conversion of religion, no need to change the religion, and only if you turn into a Christian.
Oruvarun kristuvan marada.
And no one need to become a Christian.
Avarun kristuvay maranu.
But everyone must become a Christ.
Pushtha, avan catchpunttha.
And there he quotes the point.
Chuti chuti matthadhuka venditthara, matthamnu solitthara, marunnu solitthara, avaruvadane inquiry kupindha.
At last he said so that he was speaking about conversion and we must call him for inquiry.
Kaalile patumunikvarusun.
And ten o'clock we came there.
Na chonnay, nalla varthee kexol, anangal CD eduthukonnavan cholra, eduthu portu parun, karashila, poiita.
At last he was leaving the matter and went.
Edukisunna na.
Why I saying this?
Indha obadesa onne epri maatho, ippooru nam devan depligala irukram, ini ividamai, ini evidamai irupomindhu ariyo, anaalum, avar velipodum bodhu, avarukopai irupom.
And we do not know how we are and we are changing and we are disappearing, we do not know how we will be transformed.
Irindavadaaka.
Secondly.
Aval banuvelin kumarathi.
And she was the daughter of Anuel.
Apri na enna artho.
What does it mean?
Banu Elnaya.
Who is that Anuel?
Adadhu, chella karigalala marubi marubi varu.
And some kind of things will become in different.
Malayarpatla Miriam daam, puriyarpadla Mariyal.
And Miriam in Old Testament is made in New Testament.
Malayarpatla Miriamna irukliya.
Old Testament, it was mentioned Miriam.
Chennaila vandhu Hamilton Bridge no nirundichu.
And at Chennai, there was a Hamilton Bridge.
Adhu iluthu iluthu, nama Chennaialgalala peesia, Ambattan varaavadiya mariichi.
And when Chennai people, when their cultural language, when they speak, and it become Ambattan.
Ambattan varaavadi na enna terimilla, shavupandrava, mudivatrava, Hamilton mari, epri mariichi, Ambattan varaavadiya mariichi.
And Hamilton was changed, it was turned into a different.
Alu bole.
Likewise.
Miriam, avala puriyarpadla Mariyal.
And Old Testament in Miriam, in New Testament, she is called as Miriam.
Malayarpatla Beniel, puriyarpadla Banuel.
And Beniel at the New Testament, Banuel, a New Testament.
Adiyavamutthala ninga pathingana.
When we look into Genesis.
32, 30.
At thirty-two ten.
Appadhi aakupu naan.
32, 30.
Thirty-two thirty.
Appadhi aakupu naan devane mugamugamai kandeen, uyithappi pedethen indhu soli, andhasthalathukku Beniel indhu peridhan.
Devane mugamugamai kandeen, abina, adukku Beniel indhu peridhan, abina enna artho, Beniel indhu chonnal devan udayam mugam, indraatho.
I have seen God face to face, when we say Beniel, it is, I am looking up to see him face to face or go face.
Idhu iluthu iluthu, puriyarpadla oru bodhu, epri mariichi, stylea, Banuel, alam namaalangala, paanu maribanu, abidla pervekran.
And dragging these level, become a fanuel at a New Testament.
Paadi varisheelaan peruvichirkan.
And Shem, they have your name as Sheila.
Abidana, paadi sistersu seelaanuvichiravanga, keta, Pauloda maneviinu, a Paulu kuyadu maneviye.
And they used to tell it is a wife of Saint Paul and Paul do not have any for wife.
Paul Sheila vai kuttikunduponanna, oru sister kuttipitanatama, apriyalla, Sheila agaradha ambla payam per.
And Sheila, it is a name of a male.
Abidana, avde sariyana per, English lenneruke, Sheila agadhu, enna de, Silas.
Silas in English.
Idhu inno radhatla Biblela varadhu, Silvanu.
In other name, it is called as Silvanus.
Silvanu vai kuttikundu, ibidi sister akiravangana, thiripu Bibleyin maadichangal podurukku, Silvanu chodhi.
So they have termed the English term as a Silvanus in Bible.
Malayarathila Paulosum, Seilosum, abidana, hmm. Am Chennaila oru paya, oru vedla twins parandanga, adukku pasvesli chodchikari, Paulos, Seilos.
At Chennai, the twins were there.
Paulos, Paulos, Silos.
And pastic, give a name as Paulos and Silas.
Parala, Silas uleethalirka.
And Silas, he was in ministry now.
Na edukidhu solradhu na.
Why I say this?
Beniel tha epri mari varadhu. Ah, naan mugamugamai devane kandeen.
And Beniel means, I have seen God face to face.
Devanin mugathain naan parthain.
I have seen the face of God.
Anaal andhathakidu Beniel nu peruvich.
So the name was called as Beniel.
Idha appamekko nyi changeaidhi.
At that time itself, it was changed a little.
Eppame mararamchichi.
When it was changed.
Ah, appame Beniel, Benuelamariichi, puriyarpadla oru bodhu Banuelamariichi.
And Benuel, it becomes Benuel, at New Testament, it becomes Anuel.
Adu Biblela ninga pakala, adiyavamutthale parkala.
And we can read in Genesis.
Avan Benuelakku vandhan.
And he came to Benuel.
Ah, ida purithu ningal, niyayadi parigalina nighara, niyayadi parigala padchigana, Benuelin goburavnu, oru goburav.
And there was a tower, called tower of Benuel.
Abina enna artho, etta madigaram, padineela vasanam, niyayadi parigal, ette, padineele, idhu da.
Eight seventeen of judges.
Apri, appame Beniel epri mariichi parunga.
Pindu avan seebavi saibuna.
Ette padineele.
Benuelin kobrathu edithu.
Benuelin goburam.
And the tower of Benuel.
Idhu puriyarpadla oru bodhu, enna che, pe bavaa ichi, Banuelavi mariichi, ippar nama vedla, allarukko, munubanu irukkanga, andabanu, indabanu, ellabanu irukkanga.
In the New Testament, it becomes Benuel.
Abidana enna artho, devanunniyam mugam.
The meaning is a face of God.
Indha Annaaludaya, appa, illa, avga per vandhu, Benuel.
And father of Anna is called as a fanuel.
Aval Banuelin kumarathi.
And she was the daughter of Benuel.
Devan udayam mugathai parkum valkai.
And having the light to see here because the face of God. You must become a blessing.
Ni redhavudhu devan de mugathai parkupudiyavanai irukkam.
Second, you must be the one to see or behold the face of God.
Sanghida karantolra, ummude mugathai motti, annakum marachidadiyega.
And Shamsa say, hide not your face from me.
Ummude mugathai annakukkaathunga.
Show your face to me.
Andu de mugathaparkara oru valki, thanaava vandhitthu.
And we are living a life to face him.
Oru radhatla Moser cholra, anduvaray, na ummude mahimeyapakunna.
At one place and he said, so Moses, I want to behold your glory.
Aba anduvar cholna, niyuradhatla vandhinillu, na unakum mahimeyakathra.
And God said unto him, you stand in the place where I show your glory.
En mugathani, kana matthai.
But you will not see my face.
Atramu 33.
Irudha vasanam.
Ah.
Ni en mugathai kana matthai.
Ni en mugathai kana matthai, ana inge even cholra, na devan de mugathapaththengara.
And Heathen said, so you will not see my face, but here he say, I have seen the face of God.
Ummude nokkame, puriyarpadu sabayinu de nokkame, devan de mugathapakaradhu.
Our purpose, the purpose of the New Testament Church is to face, they see the face of God.
Indha olakathla uuliyakaran, ellati vittadhu karnen, viswasi ellati vittitu vandhu karnen, oruayakarn, yara bagano, yara bagano, esivin mugathapakano.
The reason for forsaking everything in this world of the self-servants of God believers is to see the face of Jesus.
And oruayay, vanjayaladha poyitthirukkam.
And we are going with the same design.
Yobucholra, naanavare pathpay.
I will behold him.
Anniya kankalala, ensondakankalal, naanavare kanve.
Not my strange eyes, but my own eyes, I will see him.
22, 4, enna solugiradhu.
And what revelation, chapter twenty-two is supposed to.
Uuliyakaran, angayapoy, avudaya Tamil Bible tapu, Tamilla Bible chollirukku, samugathai darisi paru, samugathan angayadarisi chidukkuma, angaboy, English lenneruke.
And they see.
Mugathai darisi paru.
And they shall see his face.
Vasinga Tamil, enga, English, enga.
Velipanthal, Iruthrenda, 4, avudaya uuliyakaran, avare seevithu.
Ah, ninga vasinga, Tamil vasinga, English vasinga.
Avadhi samugathai darisi parugun.
Samugathai darisi parugun, enga Tamilla chollirukku, ah.
And they shall see his face and his life shall be.
Mugathaparparu.
And they shall see his face.
Angaboy parlautlu, parukkala, thiripi, angaboy pakuporo.
And if we do not behold them there and there, we will see his face.
Ah, ni devan udayaprlayanaal, ni baakiyavan, mudalavuyithaladhu, pangulavavan baakiyavan, avan kristaveen mugathaparpan, pidavin mugathaparpan.
If you are child of God, you are blessed and he will behold the face of Jesus and his father and they are blessed.
Manishral, manishari looruvaram, kandiradavaram, kana kodadavarama, ye, ye, chakraadi pariyay, na parkapoguram.
And we are going to look unto the Godfather and who was not beholded by the men and the people of men.
Indha kudumbutthala vandha, indha kothrathala vandavalda, Annaal.
And he who come in this tribe is Anna.
Annaal chonnakirubai pettaval, illaavta, dayavu pettavalna artho.
Anna means one who got favor or grace.
Devan de pligal, indhanakkala, kirubai, dayavu pettavala irukkam.
And the child of God must receive the kindness, a favor or grace from God.
Ipa dayavu irukkunna, epri kandupidiyakadhu.
How we can find that they are having kindness?
Ellaame namukku favoraranda, dayavu irukkunna arthama.
If everything is favorable to us, is that they will receive.
Adu oru vidhutthala correct.
At what point is correct?
Dayavu kradhu, English lenna thandu chollirukku, favor na thandu chollirukku.
And favor in English mentioned.
Devanathilindhu dayavu pettanudai, sariyana adayala enna?
What is the real symbol or sign for receiving favor from God?
Enakadava dayavu karchirukka, abina enna artho.
And what does it mean that I have got the kindness from God?
Adukku pala velakkangalirukku.
And there are many explanations behind it.
Avudaya dayavu. Ah, neediya, valvu.
And long life is his favor.
Avudaya dayavanaal, avgal selvamai, valindha irukkam.
And they will live in dainty because of.
Idhala devan de dayavula uladhu.
And these are the kinds of favor.
Anu meyana deva dayavula namukku kadekharadhu, enna, onne gunappadumbodi deva dayavu ninjidite erukku, yevikidite erukku.
And the real favor of God will make you to come in the most perfect way.
Romar.
Irindha madigara, 4 vasanam.
Ah.
Alas deva dayavu, ni gunappadumbodi, onne yevikaradhu, endha ariyam.
Ummude deva dayavu irukkunna chonnal, onne, aavya, noru vada matthar, ondaya, urutidite arparu.
And if you have the favor of God and the spirit of God will not leave you.
Ipa chella pligal, ninga parunga, ey, okar, elumbu, mangalpode, kanna modu, angabakar, angava, abidin chollidhena, unkuk yurichal payikuthu vandhumari.
And some will be asked to stay on knees, to close your eyes, bind, and they will be getting traumatized or irritated.
Karna enna, avulukku, tanga pligal, alla irukkunna, andhore kanna utthala dhamprupanga, avanadi swadina, pathi avukpesamatanga, adu bole.
And likewise, the devan will not speak about the freedom and their intention is that they have to come and grow in a perfect way.
Ungalukku, enakku, deva dayavu irukkunna chonnal, ni nalla sandoshama, nalla selvathakuduthu, unya vaasirukirudhu, maatharam alla, andha deva dayavu irukkunna, sariyana adayala, onne gunappadumbodi, ninjidite erukku, onne sariputtradhu, unakulla poradikite erukku, yevikundey.
And the real intention of the favor of God will make you or urge you to come out good, being repented or come in a perfect way.
Deva dayavu irukkunna chonnal, urutham unarva arpan artho.
When you hear the favor of God and you will have that realization.
Oru chinni tappunta, kuda, avanala, samaanama irukkumidiyadhu.
And even if you come with a small mistake and they cannot live in peace.
Oradene mangal potruva.
Immediately they will stand on knees.
Oradene talthitruva.
And they will humble them.
Oradene arike edhruva.
And he will confess.
Oradene phora portu besirva.
And he will call and speak.
Oradene compromise saiduva.
Immediately they will compromise.
Deva dayavu lenna, irudhey kadinamaidu.
If they do not have the favor of God and they harden.
Alala tha isravil jalanakku, paruvana kurihtun, kattar peesumbadhu, evan mail, kadinama irukka, chithama irukkuna, avan mail, kadinama irukkuna, enna paruvana pathi solitthi, devajananguvichunna, evan mail, dayavu irukka, robbiru, avanukke, tan kirubaya irukka.
And looking unto Pharaoh, the people of Israel, the Lord said so unto Pharaoh, and he who was hardened, I will harden unto him, and this was favor, I will be favor unto them.
Puriyarpadla kirubai pettal, namukka alla irukkunna teri, yare, mariyalapadi, deva devu, enna chonnal, kirubai pettavale, ni valga.
An angel was said about Mary and those who get grace be said before.
Apu puriyarpadu valkila, dayavu kirubai namukka thav.
And in the New Testament life and we are in need of the grace and favor.
Avla pathi Bible cholligiradhu.
And the Bible said about her.
Aval aserudaya kothrathal.
And she belonged to the tribe of Israel.
Banuelin kumarathi.
And she was the daughter of Anuel.
Annaal ennum tirkadarisi.
And she was a prophetous kalkana.
Abishagan pettavangal, allar me tirkadarisi.
All the anointed ones were called as prophets.
Alala thana kandakaladi, ninga pesa kodadhu cholradhu.
So I used to tell, you should not have any vain conversation.
Vartegalat cheliva pesunna, avasimilada, vartele, vongvailandu varakura, abishagan pettani, maranamun, jivanun, engaruke, onavilak.
And life and death is found in your tank and so you should not utter any unnecessary words.
Ah, alala tha, ni abishagan pettavu, varte, control pandu.
You have to control your words that you are anointed.
Pressing, enna cholra.
For the solemnancy.
Pressing, enna cholra. Pressing, ilena solapadrakadhu.
And what is mentioned in the book of Ecclesiastes.
Deva samugathil, unvartegal, surukkama irupada.
And let your words be contained in the words presence of God.
Alala thana saachi, adhigima solavadhal.
So we are not giving more time for uttering testimony.
Avadukken, indhichikittu, devi, sugutukka, maari, enatiya solitthi arparu.
And they must speak something contrary to that dying healing.
Maadukkutipodu, idhu dasaachiya.
And how have given anyone, it is a testimony.
Saachi vandhu remba gavana markana.
And testimony must be very careful.
Un, ni deva samugathil, nirkumbo, unvartegal epri irupada, surukkama irupad.
When you are the presence of God, you are words and tongues with this be shortened.
Oru chella, saachi solimudichu, onne priyamana, avarulay, thapal, eda prasangas start pandrana artho.
And when some, they utter a testimony and they used to call some believer.
Bangalore, oral saachi chunnadu.
And Bangalore, one person testified.
Pasasampal, pinnala ukandhanda.
First Samphol sitting at behind.
Saachi mulijirchi.
Testimony was over.
Mudiyam bodhu, enudaya saachi, ketta priyamana, avarulay, tapun, chatte, putchilutthara.
At the end of the testimony, he said so, and believer and he was catching his shirt.
Onne saachi channa solasunna.
I told to tell you testimony.
Adukla priyamana, adu solradhu, na jippa, pattinga irukkala, ni enna solradhu?
I am a, I am in uniform to tell believer and why you want to tell these words?
Ni solakuradhu.
You should not sing.
Va saachi, solitthi, ni ukandhurunna, adukparu, priyamana, abidin, ni prasangmanan, angirukkavala, unevada, thapalala, allalukandhurup.
Tell your testimony, you must sit and you should not continue any other words and many topless people were sitting in that meeting.
Angavandhu, nama kutti solakuradhu.
And you should not give acknowledge to them.
Oradhatla, oramma saachi, yam paya, apri, putinichu, na chonnay, yesu cholluma, vongpayanakalada, okkarintha.
At one place and she was testing her son and told, do you tell about Jesus and don't speak any other words?
Adu paru, nama kremba, thuk, yamani, ene, pathala, tippidikramari.
And when I look unto him and she was not getting fire.
Adu paru, appavandhal, thunukku, nairan, angaboy ukandhurunna, indhaal, mojili, muriyukuradhu.
Whenever she comes and you should sit behind the pillar, not to look my face.
Na chonnay, devan de samugathla, yar priyavaru, onakku devan eda nanmasinchara, sol, adavittu, putti, yam paya, apri, putchita, apri, putchita, adhalala, idhu solradhu, na angay, sabayavichitthuka.
I told you, you are great ones from the midst and you have to tell about him and you should not tell about son and you should not praise him.
Adhalarundhu, ninga, appapathingala, thunukku, pinnala, boy, orinjiko.
And from there, whenever she comes and she will sit behind the pillar.
Karashila, avan payanuk kalyanach.
At last, her son was got married.
Chief pastor vandupandha.
And she passed through conducted marriage.
Karashila, bata, avan ragasya, kudiakarapaya.
At last, and he was a secret drunkard.
Nekidai vesularka.
Now he was in divorce, state.
Chief pastor, yanda, kalyanathukpoonu, bangaramana, manada.
And she passed through a mixed spirit and wife got married with him.
Apri, putin, alala thana, enakidirimilla, alala thana, na ukkar, oru varthla ukkar.
I know about her sense, so I said, so you must sit in a corner.
Vartegal surukkama.
And let your words be contained.
Ni oru tirkadarisi.
You are a prophet.
Abishagan, eneki, padchidi, aneki, ni yare, uuliyakarav, viswasi, ningalaya yare, tirkadarisi.
When you are anointed, a servant of God or believer, you are a prophet.
Ninga Biblela padchiparunga, Abraham, yendha radhatla, en, billagale, naan ungal matthirirukkunna, tirkadarisne, chollala, ana Bible cholligiradhu, anduvar sadhar, avan oru tirkadarisi.
And when you read in Bible and you will read about Abraham and he was a prophet.
Enga adhurka? Chellaga, Jeremia, Esaike, Joyal, allam, vadhusiya, padikirigala, Biblela, tirkadarisna, bustanga, Abraham, ninga adhurka buku?
And is there any book called the prophetical book of Abraham? We are reading about Jeremia and Esaike and Job.
Oru radhatla, kuda, Abraham tirkadarisne chollala, ana Biblela, anduvar sadhar, vasinga.
Adiyam, Irudha madigara, 4 vasanam.
Ah.
Andhamaan shodhi, manevi, avan thirkaanipimidu, avan oru tirkadarisi.
Yare, Abraham yare, oru tirkadarisi.
Abraham was a prophet.
Abishagan padchidiya, ni oru viswasiya, maritiina, ni oru tirkadarisi, ni chonnada, kattar, accept onevaru.
If you are anointed, if you turn as a believer, whatever you tell, he will accept since you are a prophet.
Alala thana, varte, control pandi, peesin, cholra.
So I used to tell you, control your words.
Ah, unde vartegal, jivanirukkunna.
And there must be life in your words.
Abishagan irukkunna.
And there must be anointing.
Oru kiruba irukkunna.
There must be grace.
Opal, saramerna, vartegal, irukkunna.
And it must be the word season with salt. And it must be the words seasoned with salt.
Humans talk. You can't do that. You can't do that.
All the vain words, man, he must hit account.
You can't do that. You can't do that. You can't do that.
And whatever spills down, you can get back and when the words are spilled down, you cannot write it back.
When water is boiled, it will boil. It will not be boiled. In the words, I used to tell if the wounds are healed with fire, it will be healed.
That with the words when they are altered and it was wounded, it will not be healed.
I told you. Abhishek, you are a prophet.
So I said when you are anointed and you are a prophet.
You can check and see. If someone is speaking to you, tell and tell him the Lord will give you job.
Surely the Lord will give him job.
You said that, it will happen.
And what you say, it will be obeyed.
You said that, it will happen. But for your words, Bible tells. I am thinking about your words. If it's wrong, I will fix it.
Sometimes it may be wrong words and whatever with the words it is utter from the mouth of God, servant of God, it will be prospered.
A Indian preacher went to India.
An Indian preacher called Diane and then he went to foreign countries to make a preaching.
I told you.
Already have said.
At the meeting, you will hear a woman.
At the end of the meeting, husband came out.
He was a child.
And there was urgent.
You said that, the Lord will give you a child. They said that, we don't have a child. But sorry.
It is true that we did not have child, but sorry.
What?
There is what?
You don't have a child, the Lord will give you a child. You don't have a child. My wife has a problem with you. They removed her.
And there is no child. It is true that there is a uterus problem and there is a uterus from my wife.
The priest said that. Why is this? We said that we have a child.
And I told her to conceive a child and there was no uterus and I was so tense.
They went to India.
And he came to India.
Next year, they called for someone and I said I will not come. I won't come. I have a program.
And I have many programs.
I am very busy.
I am so busy.
But they don't have a ticket. You have to go.
And they told that we have applied for tickets and must come.
There is a blessing. You have to go.
And you must come here for preaching.
I said that I will not go. But I will go. But we will go.
And he said to God and I am compelled to me, so I am going. Do not come to the meeting for three days.
You should not do that. We will go. I don't want to.
Don't put me in shame and I go there until I come to India. They should not come to the meeting.
The first day meeting, we didn't have an address. We finished the room.
And first day meeting and they were not had come and he was so happily.
Second day over. Judge star.
And second day was over, he was become a victor.
The last day meeting.
And last day meeting.
The meeting was over.
At the end of the meeting.
We were going to meet.
And when he started to depart the place and two persons came.
He saw a child.
And he looked into him, is there a child? There is no child.
I prayed that at last you made me to catch this. He was raised. And the two persons came. How to tackle?
And he did not know how to tackle and face him.
He prayed to the Lord pastor.
And he said, pray to the Lord pastor.
The Lord is faithful. He said, what is it? The Lord is faithful. What is it?
And he was not giving an explanation and he was so troubled.
You said that.
And you uttered a prophecy on God.
I didn't say that. The Lord said that.
It was not said by you, it was said by God.
What is it? The child is born. He said that. What is it?
And I asked what you want to see.
Pastor, you said that the Lord has a child.
And you.
The Lord is faithful.
And what you told, it is true, the Lord is faithful. My wife is conceived right now.
He took a uterus. He went to the hospital. He said that he is conceived.
And he was confused last he said and there is no uterus. Now he was telling, she was conceived.
We have to check up. A new child is born. The doctor gave a certificate.
We went for a checkup and he gave a certificate and the ground is formed.
The child is removed. The priest said that. A new child is born.
The home was removed, but the prophecy that he was uttered so. And the Lord had made a new home, created a new home in her and she was conceived right now.
You are a prophet. You are a prophet.
Only God and God must proceed out of your mouth and otherwise it will spill out of your mouth.
If there is any word, you can speak. The priest said that. You don't have to ask. If there is any word, you can speak. If there is not, what is it? You are a prophet.
The words according to verification must proceed out of your mouth and no mean words and or else you must remain silent.
The priest said that. If there is any word, you don't have to ask. If there is any word, you can speak.
If not, you must remain silent. You are a prophet. You are a prophet.
And you must be a good prophet.
You are a good prophet.
You must be a clear prophet.
I told you. When I preach, I used to tell when you utter prophecy, you should not speak in unknown tongues. You don't speak in front.
First, you must speak in the prayer or in the back.
Because you said that. You don't know. You don't know.
The prophecy which you utter, those who are behind, they must understand.
You said that. You have to hear.
And the word must reach into the people to whom you utter the prophecy.
You have to hear. You have to hear. You don't know. You don't know.
Shouting and leaping and chanting if you speak with unknown tongues and they could not understand.
You said that. When the word comes, you don't have to speak. You have to do it. You have to do it.
And first word must come to you, you must identify whether it is for you or not. If it is for yourself and you should utter the prophecy.
If it is for yourself.
And when it is processed, it was in church, the spirit of God will speak.
You don't have to add or decrease any word from it. You have to add or decrease any word from it.
And for revival and you should not add the sweet and sober.
In the verse 22.
And what is mentioned, revelation, chapter 22.
In the verse 22. You have to eat. You have to eat. Listen.
29 years old. One of these prophets who wrote the book of the book. He was in the book of the book. In the book of the book. His brother was killed.
Who? In another verse.
29 years old. One of these prophets who wrote the book of the book.
You have to eat.
He was killed.
He has eaten.
And he will add them, plagues in them.
You have to hear. Our words are prophetic words and we must be very careful in spiritual life. You saw that. It was a sorrow.
When we look into the life of this woman and it was so green.
She got married. Seven years.
And seven years her husband was there.
He left.
At length, she was.
He left.
And then she became a widow.
But she was scared.
So it is very important how she used her life.
She saw that.
And sometimes there may be a challenging achievement which comes, transgressions become.
It was like a cycling.
It is like a cycle.
She was born.
And valley and pit and mountains become.
She lived a life.
And life with her husband was only seven years.
After that, she kept her marriage.
Then after, she preserved the virginity.
She lived until 87 years. She said that. She said that.
And some after the marriage and even married two or three marriages.
But you see. She went to the church. She was born. She was born.
She did not enter into the second step and was not having any husband and was taken person as my creator, as my husband.
She changed her life. She went to the church.
She got married and she became a widow and till 84 years she lived.
She was born.
Then after, her life was not with a husband but with God.
She became a holy widow. You can read about the group of widows in book of apostles. Apostles. 19 years old.
When we look into Acts, chapter nine.
There is a group. 19 years old.
He went to the church. He went to the church. They took him to the church. Then they went to the church. They went to the church.
They went to the church.
In the group of the saints of God, they were widows.
You have to read about this. You said that. But God is your God.
When we become, we know this world that will make us shake us that when we are up to God and he is our creator.
She changed her life.
And learn how she lived, modified her life.
We have to make the situations favorable to us. You have to make the situations favorable to us.
And whatever the situation circumstances, maybe you must make it favorable to you.
You have to make the situations favorable to us.
Even the landscape must be favorable to you.
You have to make favor the furnace of fire. You have to make favor the furnace of fire.
Whatever path the Lord may lead you, you must be favorable towards.
I will tell you.
It said about cats.
You can't do that. She was pushed around and it will stand. You have to manage correctly. Balance. She will balance itself and will stand in four foot. You have to do that.
And the Christian, he may go in any kind of situation, he will become a Christian.
You have to do that. She kept her life.
How she preserved her life of holiness from young age till the old age?
She went to the church. She was born. She said that. She said that. She said that.
Husband was dead and everyone lifted me, approached me and regarded me and she was not more marrying at last and said so. My creator is my husband and was living with him.
I didn't say that.
And even a single day, he was not complaining.
You don't hear that.
And he did not ask any question to God.
He asked that.
And she did not ask any question or complaint to God, why the Lord is taking me in such place?
You have to do that.
When husband was born dead and it became a widow.
She continued her spiritual life.
And she started a spiritual journey from that day.
How she started? She started. She went to the church.
When this incident happened in her life and she did not go to backsliding state and she went to the temple of God.
That was her life.
And that was a pick-up state for her life.
She went to the church. 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 She went to the church.
And some they become jobless and they don't have any house and they will be slowing down in the spiritual life and they will go to the backsliding state.
That is not possible.
And he does not like it.
She was young age, only seven years lived her life.
At last, he lost her life and then.
I went to the church.
At one place, I went to a meeting at Kerala.
First four meetings, the people were dumb.
And first day meeting, all the people were so dim.
They were dumb.
And they were dull.
I asked the people, are you going to Kerala in the meeting?
At the end of the meeting and I asked the people, so revival and they will be revived in those days.
They were all dead.
At evening, there was a real service, so people were so dumb.
What?
I asked what?
She went to the church. She left.
And one girl got married before seven days and he was dead today.
She went to the church.
After, she met an accident, a jury. After seven days, she was taken to her own house.
How it will be? She said that.
And the girl was so confirmed that without the knowledge of God, nothing will happen to me.
Do you tell like that? She asked God whether there is eyes for God.
There become a mistake.
You see.
Only seven years he lived and what life he will live.
She went to the church. She went to the church.
In the troublesome situation, not departing from heart and she was not departing from the temple of God.
You are the temple of God.
The temple of God is holy.
She preserved living in the temple of God and that is a life living in the temple of God. Do you think?
See, how it would be, I think that's.
She changed her life. She went to the church. You are a prophet.
Healing, health, prosperity, joy, grief and that is not behind this life and she was spending time with God.
She said that. She went to the church.
The reason for walking in life and she was not going to anywhere has been she had not departed from the temple of God.
She went to the church.
And she had got such a train up in her life.
You have to do that.
You must be turned like this.
You have to do that. We went to the church.
And you should not backslide, retract, tie or beard and you should not depart from the temple of God.
The Lord is the God.
And what is the law of the temple of God?
The Lord is the God. He is the God.
And all the places with temple of God and coast is holy.
She went to the church. She went to the church.
And chatting or joking or doing any other conversation, it is not her practice and she sat in the temple of God in the presence of God.
She never turned anywhere. You have to do that.
When we will read about the design of law.
You have to do that. In RC Bible, it is there. Judith. Judith. And there is a book.
And they said about a woman called Judith.
She was a great. She left.
And husband was dead.
She was not departing her house.
She was not departing her house. And she used to stay in the house with prayer.
She was a war. She was a war.
And she was the reason behind the victory of the war.
She went to the church.
And the Lord let her there because the Lord was with him.
She has a book.
And they had a book called Judith.
After coming to the spiritual life, when the problems comes, when the great and small things may come in your life, you should not depart from the temple of God. Yes. She went to the church.
And Jesus came on eight days to the temple of God.
She went to the church.
And twelve years and he sat in the temple of God.
She went to the church.
At thirty years, he was in the temple of God.
She went to the church.
And he moved to the temple of God.
His mind is running towards the temple of God. She went to the church.
And you should not come away from the aspect of staying in the temple of God.
She went to the church.
And they depart not from the temple of God.
She went to the church.
And they and night she are fasted.
You have to fast.
In Christian life, we take fasting.
You have to understand.
When we turn fasting, there is a limit for it.
You have to do that.
And some they take too much of fasting and become a sick.
You must take fasting. You have to do that.
Only the spirit of God urges you, you must take fasting.
I told you.
Once again, I repeat.
You have to do that.
A believer, a week must take fasting three times.
You have to do that.
A servant of God must take fasting five times a week.
You have to do that.
There was a training which is given to us.
You have to do that.
Bible study will not have.
You have to do that.
On the day of the Bible study, morning and night.
You have to do that.
Entire meeting, morning and evening will not have.
Sunday morning.
And Sunday morning, no food.
You have to do that. You have to do that.
In Luke chapter 8, in a fairy, she said twice a week I take fast.
In Matthew 5, she said. You have to do that.
Fight and to have Matthew said so by Jesus and your righteous must be more than of this pharisee or else you cannot come to the heaven.
You have to do that. At least three times.
A believer must take fasting at least three times a week.
I ask you to tell it properly. You have to do that. You have to do that. You have to do that.
It doesn't matter that you have to take fasting for ten days, at least three days fasting, you must take in a right way.
We have to do that.
And we will take fasting and we will roam around.
We have to do that.
And we will tell fasting and we will fight and.
We have to do that.
And telling fasting, we will see the TV series.
You have to do that. We have to do that.
And telling fasting and we will go to a relative's house.
We have to do that.
And telling fasting, we eat four bread.
We have to do that.
And telling fasting, we will drink three juices.
We have to do that.
Or we will drink two cups of oats.
You have to do that.
Telling so fasting and without drinking water, you must take fasting, then you will go to heaven.
You have to do that.
And take fasting in the right way.
The girl, 84 years old. You have to do that. You have to do that.
And woman eighty-four years of old and she was not departing from the temple of God and take fasting nights and days.
You have to do that.
In a medical shop, it is written that fasting is a good medicine.
What is medicine? You have to do that.
And whatever is given to me, I will eat and what is given to me will not be defined.
You have to do that.
A servant of God ate in a hotel.
The cashier looked at him. He asked, are you a pastor?
At the end, he asked, are you a pastor?
Yes.
And he said yes.
You have to do that.
If you eat like that, then how you will be a pastor?
You have to do that. I went to faith home.
At faith home and my brother came.
He will never come and visit me, but he came. I have to go.
And very urgently, I must go out.
You have to do that. You have to do that.
It is the house of God, this is a faith.
I went to the church. I have to do that.
And he said he came for a program, there is a program which is very urgent for me, I am departing, you give food and he departed.
I have to do that.
And they have given a royal dignity to him because since he was my brother.
I have to do that.
And he departed and I also came to faith home.
I went to the church.
And next day he came, spoke to me.
You are a prophet.
And he said so and you are taking some.
You are a prophet. What is it? In English, what is it? You are a prophet. You are a prophet.
And you worship everything and you came in a saintly order.
I have to do that. You have to do that.
And he asked, you are eating like this and how you take this well?
You have to do that. You have to do that.
And he said, and saints will eat a lot and but you are not taking that order.
You are a prophet.
And how you are saintly order and my saintly order?
We have to do that.
And we eat well and said so and taking fasting.
You have to do that. He has to do that. We have to do that. You have to do that. You have to do that.
And taking too much drinks and there is no fasting.
The girl, 40 years old.
And the woman was taking fasting.
You have to do that.
And you have subject your body.
You have to do that.
And all who was not overcoming this meat will not go to heaven.
You have to do that.
And when he was telling, today they have conducted a peace, I was taking fasting, their fasting is waste.
You have to do that. 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 You have to do that.
And some used to ask them to preserve the food and they were not able to eat during the fasting and fasting is waste.
Muslims.
And the Muslims will take fasting.
You have to do that.
From morning six to evening six and they will not even.
You have to do that. You have to do that. We have to do that. Fasting. You have to do that.
And these are deserving and this is not a proper fasting.
How God, Jesus took fasting?
How Jesus took fasting?
Listen. 40 years old.
He did not drink nor forty days, day and nights.
29 years old. He was 40 years old.
40 years old. Listen. 40 years old. You have to do that. Hmm? You have to do that. When he took fasting, he did not eat and drink. Listen. 49 years old. 49 years old. What is it? 40 years old. Pussilyamalum, gudiyamalum. He was in Malai Ujichil, he was in Katturod, he was in Tivana. And the class of the mountain and there was no other food and he was taking fasting for seven days.
Forty days, he was kneeling prayer.
He did not eat on those days. And you must connect fasting in some of the churches, I have made a fasting without any. You can wash your face and you should brush and you can come to the meeting, you should not even have water. At nine o'clock, they will start the prayer, but one o'clock will be ended up. And I have conducted those times. Three hours of kneeling prayer. And I have kept a competition. A normal three hours, even some come, people come, they will not come. If it could not help, impossible and you can stand behind. And some used to tell unwillingly, I was not while falling down, but without my knowledge, I have fallen down. And they were trying to stand on knees for three hours, but our people even the middle of the time under the. And three hours of time, we stood like that. And how are you able to stand on knees. And there was a pastor at Tirupur and he was conducting the prayer involving the. And her wife was a believer. And whenever the kneel prayed, can't come back and he will depart. I asked, you are so old and how you are able to stand knees. I was committing the prayer, so I was able to stand. And the doctors say, and you could not stand on knees, but still I was able to stand on knees for three hours. And day and night fasting. Day and night, he fasted and prayed. And she, how her practice. Only enjoyment and entertainment for us is prayer, standing on knees. And how it did not be bored with prayer. And she was speaking. And got a wish. And got an anointing. And she could not know how the time is passing. And the spirit of God is supplicating with groanings. And keeping their burden upon him. If you start to pray well, the law will keep the burden of sorrow upon you. And this is what he practiced, the governor gets a money. Yahulappadavum, tukkappadavum thodanginard. He called them and brought to the governor gets him and he started to grieve and sorrow and everyone very faint and tired. When he thought he without able to share the problem, he went as I done. To you and me the Lord, that to share is heaviness and burden to us. If he starts to share to us and we will not have the time, how the time is passing in prayer. And such a practice is there. Assisted toll once. And one day, Lord spoke to her, you must pray with me. At that day, she got to sleep and slumber, she slept well. At night, one person came. And Lord made her to sit like a child sitting in the cart. And she could not see the face, but one was sitting near her. Then she entered with the presence of God. And she could realize well and. They started to pray well. When the person was telling the prayer point and they both are praying well, at last it was three fifteen in the morning. Are you praying like this. In our prayers, we used to tell, close your eyes and start praying, at last we will have contentions and findings that we will depart from the place. And Jesus said, and you watch with me for one hour. To whom. Not with wife, a husband or children and you must stand with me for one hour. And you and him, hold the hands and start praying. And you and him should stop. And what is the practice. At eighty fourth age, she was able to pray with God, the ravenry practices and she is having the connectivity with God. She prayed and worshipped him. And you have to worship him well. At worship time, you must return like a David. How David did. When worship time comes, it was not a church, it became a road. He took the ark of God and came to home. Once he came. He came silent and now he was died on that day. And second he came. With all stern, he started to dance in the presence of God near the ark. You should not open your eyes during the worship session and you must come with full spleen. Are we rejoicing in the law. And that woman, when she was brought to the temple of God, she started to praise God. She praised God and spoke about him. And we have to speak more about God in our life. The word that she proceed out of your mouth must be gospel, truth or doctrine of the word of God. One day, you will connect your words, it is enough. The word that she proceed out of your mouth must be gospel, truth or doctrine of the word of God. But you should not talk in business, you should not talk in business. One day, a teacher, they used to speak for eight hours a day. Nine o'clock, they will enter inside and they have to shout like anything. And you are shouting for the money, not for God. I am saying, your time is enough. Luca two thirty eight.
She came and stood, praised God, met him, talked to him.
And not with about him, she speak only about Jesus. And such a life is there. They also say, Lord give me such a life, let, close your eyes and stand on knees. And we cannot tell, I will grant to grow old and she will tell, I was eighty, eighty four years old and you were sixty years. You must receive the grace. You must receive the anointing. And you must receive grace and favor from God. You must see the face of God. You must become a blessed. You should not depart the temple of God. You must fast day and night. You must speak only about him. The Lord give us a grace according to this life. Open your mouth and ask, Lord, give me that grace. For two minutes. Let the power of God come and control over you.